4C, to accept and file executed oath of office. 12C1, to accept and place on first reading proposed ordinance amendments to section thirty-three, one through sixty-one through thirty-three, one dot seventy of the Holland City Code with a final reading and adoption scheduled for council's regular meeting on October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Twelve E one point one, to postpone the proposed parking changes near Moran Park on West Twenty-Second Street and Longfellow School on East Twenty-Fifth Street to ensure property owners are notified and have an opportunity to comment as recommended by the city's traffic committee. Twelve E one point two, to approve the Thirtieth Street Sidewalk Improvement Project to Georgetown Construction in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney and adopt the project budget with funds allocated from the Community Development Block Grant Funds. Twelve E one point three, to approve the Seventh Street Snowmelt Project to Camminga Roadbelts Incorporated in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney and adopt the project budget with funding allocated from the amended Seventh Street Parking Deck Brownfield Funds. Twelve E five point one, to accept and approve the Bureau of Justice Assistant Funds in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents and authorize staff to proceed with grant requirements and procurement of equipment. Twelve E six point two, six point three, and six point four, to adopt resolutions scheduling public hearings of necessity to consider the final rules for the annual downtown parking operations and maintenance, principal shopping district, and downtown snowmelt assessments for Wednesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and that the clerk publish and mail the required notices. Twelve E six point five, to accept and approve the submittal of a grant application to the Michigan Humanities Council in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney. Twelve E six point six, to approve a revocable license agreement with Spindance, Inc., for the installation of a projecting sign at one fifty, East Eighth Street.
Thank you, Kathy. Now perhaps there was one of those items that you particularly came here tonight to address. If that's the case, just let us know which one and we can take it off the consent agenda. Just go to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us which item you would like taken off.
Good evening. Malcolm Miller, five six eight, West Thirtieth Street. I'm requesting that on the consent agenda, the specifically one point two, the award bid for Thirtieth Street Sidewalk Improvement be removed for further discussion.
Will do, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Dave Johnson, live at five fifty-eight, West Thirtieth Street. I too would like to mention about the Thirty- Thirtieth Street if they could postpone that in further discussion.
Okay, we will. Thank you. Any other item that people would want taken off consent? All right, moving to council. Any items council would like to take off the consent agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Moved by Trithuie?
Support.
Supported by Garcia. Could you call the roll, please, Kathy?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Kathy. Now we're going to celebrate with a proclamation for Energy Efficiency Day, and we have Ann Selyers here to accept it as really the symbol of all things energy efficient. So I'm going to come up here and we'll just read this.
Surprise.
That's great. So we have more.
Ann and company here.
Torchbearers of energy efficiency.
Excellent. I was surprised it was just going to be you. So that's great. Excellent. Okay, this is the proclamation. Whereas Holland, Michigan is committed to becoming a highly competitive, world-class community supported by innovative energy solutions that benefit the citizens, the business community, and the environment. And whereas a comprehensive forty-year plan to make the city of Holland a national leader in energy security, affordability, sustainability, and efficiency was developed as a roadmap to two thousand and fifty. And at the recommendation of the Holland Community Sustainability Committee, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Strategy was adopted by city council in two thousand and twelve as the Holland Community Energy Plan. And whereas energy efficiency is the art of getting the same or better performance using less energy, and energy efficiency is a strategic element of the plan as it is a productive and cost-effective way to meet our community energy plan goals, and implementing clean energy policies and programs help boost economic opportunities and job creations while continuing to move us toward a sustainable future. Citizens have joined staff in steadfastly carrying out the recommended energy strategies, scale projects, and enabling mechanisms in the plan. The home energy retrofit and on-bill loan programs from Holland Energy Fund help homeowners save money and improve the comfort, health, and value of their homes, and smarter energy use reduces the amount of electricity we need to power our lives. And Holland is part of a nationwide network of energy efficiency groups and partners that has designated a National Annual Energy Efficiency Day. Together, the residents and businesses of the city of Holland can continue to contribute to our success and quality of life by learning more about energy efficiency and practicing smarter energy use in our daily lives. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Nancy DeBoer, on behalf of the residents of the city of Holland, Michigan, do hereby proclaim October two, two thousand and nineteen as Energy Efficiency Day in the city of Holland, and we urge citizens to join us in supporting our community energy plan goals now and in the future. So, that's a lot. But, yes, but you know, right, you've been doing an awful lot for a long time with a lot of people, and it wasn't just one little skinny committee. It had a lot of, a lot of depth and a lot of people, and we brought in Peter Garforth at the beginning, and it has gone through all kinds of community meetings and all kinds of presentations and creative ways to help people think better about energy, and I think we're all the better because of it. So thank you so much for all that you have done, and this is, I guess, yours, even though, yes, you're the designated, or if anybody else would like to say something about the reception of the, of the day. So I know the rest of you just got up this morning thinking it was a normal day. It is Energy Efficiency Day in Holland, Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there, the Community Energy Plan does give us a roadmap to two thousand and fifty, and energy efficiency is a big component of it. It's really the first, what we call loading order of the plan. If you don't need it, don't use it. And there's a lot that's been accomplished in the last ten years toward the plan. We have the new power plant and the programs that are underway and residents are using with the home energy retrofit program, on-bill loan program. We now have nine teams that are working on projects that we plan to complete by two thousand and twenty-one. So that work does continue and involves everyone in the community to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are moving to the two thousand and nineteen Economic Update Report and the Opportunity Zone Incentive by Lake Shore Advantage. I think that brings Jennifer Owens, the director, to the podium. Thank you, Jennifer.
Turn this around. Yep, thank you so much, and it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm going to run through kind of our most recent business intelligence data, and then I, do each of you have this in front of you as well? Okay, great. And I'm going to talk a little bit about opportunity zones and this new packet that we put together. So I think most of you know Lake Shore Advantage, we couldn't do our work without your support and partnership, but really we focus on three things. One is to maintain the robust primary business base, two, tackle talent challenges, which I'll share with you later as one of our number-one barriers to growth, and then three, looking forward to ensure long-term economic health. And so the data I'll share with you today is really allowing us to look forward and make sure that we're not just resting on our laurels. So I'll touch base on our growth areas, our growing pains, and our opportunities for us long-term. In order for me to share this data with you, I want you to share the methodology. So we sit down with a hundred and twenty business executives and ask them thirty-eight of the same questions. This data is from June two thousand and eighteen to May two thousand and nineteen, and it is only with businesses in Alleghan and Ottawa County. And so for those of you who maybe look at census data or other sources, those usually have a two-year to at least eighteen-month lag. This is really real-time data that helps to drive our work. So those thirty-eight questions, people get a little bit nervous when we ask those questions. So we start out with what we think is a softball question, right? So the softball question is, what is your company's greatest achievement over the last three years? Now, for those of you who have played softball, it's not really that easy, although people think it is, and so people usually take time to ponder, and oftentimes business leaders say, I don't know, what, you know, what is that greatest opportunity? And overriding what we've heard most is, does growth count? And yes, growth does count. And so we put together a word cloud, really based on that data, and you can see the words that most came up overall in that three-year success outreach. So growth is number one. You see sales, increase, production, volume. So overall, business leaders, looking back at the last three years, really saw growth, sales increase, and expansion. And so that's a great thing for us overall. There we go. And here's some of the other data points that we saw. Now, we continue to see a really strong economy as a whole, so seventy-three percent of companies say they're going to expand in the next three years. Now what we don't ask them is, will you expand here? Because they don't know. And what you can see is twenty-two percent of those companies have facilities outside the country, and twenty-eight have facilities in other states. So they have choices. But what we are seeing, when we ask them about those expansions, we say, okay, what would the size and the scope of those expansions be? How many jobs? How much investment? And their smaller expansions, about twenty-five jobs on average, seven million dollars in investment. Now for twenty-five jobs, seven million is actually a pretty high number, and what we're really seeing is that seven million is going to automation, technology improvements, ways for them to improve their processes, they're big investments that make a major difference for our companies. So smaller job creations, but really big focus on tech. And Matt was telling me, Matt, am I clicking the right way? And a great example of that is really Hudsonville Ice Cream. So we've been in front of you a couple times today, or a couple times over the last year with Hudsonville and expansion, and for those of you who've toured Hudsonville, you're going to see more stainless steel and robotics than you do people, and they've invested significantly in that, and that has really helped them to be best-in-class, continue to improve their processes, and by investing in things like an ice cream test kitchen, which is one of their most recent investments, has allowed them to really stay ahead of the competition and continue to move at a very fast pace. So innovation, automation is really leading the growth of our employers. There we go. So that slides into growth areas. So growth areas overall, we still see, you know, a lot of growth, in particular in our companies, but what we also see is most of the growth they're seeing is related to their existing products. So we're really seeing a huge increase of the market share of their key products. So companies are growing based on what they do and do very well, and those key products are really penetrating international and national markets. So we're also seeing more of an increase in international sales overall as we have before in the past, and companies really specializing on one thing they do very well. So our employers are really competing nationally and internationally. Not only do they have locations in other states and other countries, many of them serve all over the world, and they choose to be here because it is one of the best places to do business. So it is a choice for them. They could go anywhere because many of them, majority of their market, is not here locally. So what are the growing pains? What are the challenges that we're seeing? And continually see, you know, labor is a big challenge. Seventy-nine percent of companies reported that recruiting talent is a challenge. Now that's down slightly from eighty-one percent in two thousand and eighteen. The types of positions that they are hardest to find are not the types of positions that you can automate. Engineers, skilled trade, automated positions, these are not positions that you can automate your way out of. So what do we need to do? We need to continue to attract talent in to our community to be strong long-term. And so many of the strides that you've made forward to make Holland one of the best places to do business is critically important. We need to grow the number of residents to continue to meet that demand for our existing employers. Another challenge we've seen, so number two, is land and building are not available. In fact, Colliers recently reported the industrial vacancy rate is at one point three percent. Now we think our unemployment rate is pretty low, but one point three percent, that means there's virtually no available land and buildings. Now if a company were to expand, we're looking on average between fifty and a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of expansion is what they're looking for. So the more we can focus on ways to increase the availability of industrial land or buildings that are available, the stronger our community will become. And I know there is a lot of discussion related to some of your zoning rewrites to allow more industrial land and figure out a way for employers to grow. We need to have that more, more availability if we're going to continue to stay strong. The third item really is not within your control, but it's important to reference. One in three of our employers reported tariffs is a major issue for them to continue to grow. We had at a recent event Transmatic come up and talk about tariffs and what a huge challenge they are for them. But because of our employers, they serve all over the world, and they, they produce very advanced componentry. So oftentimes, numerous products are coming in from other countries, going out to serve anywhere, you know, in the U.S. or the world, and tariffs are really, on average, causing about a thirty percent increase in their cost. So if you see your congressional delegation or anyone at the federal level, that continues to be a huge issue, and in fact, this year is the first time, obviously tariffs are relatively new, but first time we've seen this, is a huge barrier to growth for us. Now specifically from a community perspective, and I wouldn't say this is a barrier, but one of the items that we do, we ask companies to rate about thirty different community services. And so the, the services in the green are the ones that they say, you know, these are amazing. So top-aligned fire, police, ambulance, great job to those in public service, those, the scale is one to seven, those are the highest. Now usually for us, property tax assessments are at the way bottom. It's rare that we see things below property tax assessments, and so I want to draw your attention to these community amenities or services that right now companies say property tax assessments are more favorable than these items. Availability of childcare, housing, local roads, federal roads, state and highway, and public transportation. These are again, some community barriers to growth that our employers say are least attractive than property tax assessments. So I kind of went to the downsides, let's talk about growth opportunities. So what we are seeing in terms of the sectors, and I think we all know, we make things here, thirty percent of our private sector employment base is tied to manufacturing, and we continue to see a very strong growth in manufacturing. But in addition to the growth in manufacturing, construction is the second biggest growth industry, followed by professional and scientific and technical services. So why is that so important? Not only do we make things here, we also automate, innovate, and create, and that's what will continue to keep us strong. It can't only be about producing the product, we have to design, build, and develop it. And what we are seeing by that growth in professional and scientific services is that that's still strong, and that's important for us to maintain. And I wanted to point your attention to our largest employers. So part of our, another data collection is who are the largest employers in our region? And I think another strength of our community is that we don't have all our eggs in one basket. We have a very diverse range of companies who produce a wide amount of products, from Gentex to, in the automotive industry, Herman Miller, Office Furniture, Perrigo Pharmaceutical Drugs, so a very diverse range of manufacturers which will continue to make us very strong. But as we look back over the five-year period of time, we are seeing that there are actually five, or there, oop, went too fast. Can you help me out, Keith? There are actually three new employers who came in our largest employers rating. All three of them are actually now owned internationally. So YF is Chinese-owned, LG Chem is Korean, and for those of you who may not have read the news recently, JR Automation, about six months ago, was purchased by Hitachi. So we have three of our largest employers, basically new and growing, who are owned by international companies. And that's okay, because our job at Lake Shore Advantage is to make sure we have relationships at companies regardless of who is in the leadership role, but it's also very important to know that this com, this community has just a wealth of international employers, and we'll continue to watch who is being acquired and make sure we have relationships regardless. But those three companies, brand new to the list over the last five years, all three are owned outside of the U.S. There we go. And now, to opportunity zones. So, and it's not only about relationships, but it's also about making sure that we have the tools here to compete internationally. And so about a year ago, the state of Michigan issued kind of a request for proposals for a new federal program, and so they were looking at distressed census tracts. And this federal program also will allow distressed census tracts to take capital gains tax, so if you're an employer, an individual have capital gains, you can put your resources into these distressed census tracts and have the opportunity to virtually reduce that tax up to zero percent. And so it was a competitive process, and I talked to Mark at the very beginning, who was amazing, and Mark and Keith are great members of our team, and we knew we had two in the city of Holland, and one in Alleghan and one of Ottawa County. We actually put in for about five tracts total in the two areas we serve. Only two of them were selected out of the twenty-five percent, and two of them are both here in the city of Holland. So this brochure actually features what both of those tracts are, and really kind of some of the benefits to individuals who want to invest in those census tracts. And so opportunity zones is really just another tool in our toolbox. There is no downside from a local level to have it, but because you have us watching and looking and making sure that you can compete for these tools, we're hopeful that it'll encourage more investment in our tracts. And actually, for those of you who don't know, a good majority of our downtown area is actually in a distressed tract. Now probably in the next census, which is one or two years ago away, it won't be distressed anymore, but the opportunity zones allows you to submit as to what it is now. So we have great opportunities, obviously the new energy park and some other developments there, and we're hopeful that this opportunity zone tool will make it even more attractive to invest and do business in the community. So that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about our business intelligence report or our opportunity zones.
Great, Jennifer, really appreciate the way you've boiled it all down and made it so clear and exciting and, and still challenging. Anyone have something? Yes, Keith?
Yeah, and I would just like to add, Lake Shore Advantage is a great partner for us, so it's not just Jennifer, but it's her extended team. So prob, a week, I'm certain a week doesn't go by where there's not some contact of a possibility that's brewing out there, information that they get that they share with us or vice versa. And especially this opportunity zone, we've talked about this, we've kind of strategized about what's the best way to put out the information, what's the best way to use this potential tool in the toolbox. I think we're taking the right approach here where we may not be, for those of you that have followed this, we may not be a location where either people are going to come or we're necessarily excited about these very large opportunity zone funds that exist and really kind of invest from afar and don't have an interest in the community. Maybe, maybe we'd be surprised and, you know, we'd evaluate that, but I think this is more just another tool where, where local people or state people that are looking at a project anyway, this might fit perfect in the larger capital stack of being an investment that helps make something go and make it being even better. So this is a great tool that we have, and we're excited to see if and how it works. But really, just thank you to Lake Shore Advantage, they're a great partner.
You talked about industrial expansion, if they could use some more land. Did any of the companies that you talked to talk about housing within their industrial footprint, or would that be a barrier to them?
We didn't specifically ask that, but actually Jenna asked us to put out a follow-up survey for, as part of your, your zoning rewrite, and that was one of the follow-up questions, so we provided that data to kind of help guide that information. I think, Mark, you have that correct? And I think overall, actually we had a recent development, not in this community, but next to an industrial employer. I think they're okay with housing, but they just want to make sure there's a buffer because industrial leaders are a little bit concerned, they're loud, they're noisy sometimes, and many of them run twenty hours a day, and their lights are on the parking lot, so making sure that there's a buffer from residential, so industrial employers who are there first that the residents don't say, oh, it's loud and noisy. That's, they, they make things, they create things, and they run at all hours, so just understand the reality of that.
Yeah, thank you. Well, it's so valuable to have those conversations and to keep people talking and make those relationships, no matter what country they come from. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to special order of the day, public hearing. I'd like to have a report from staff about the Community Block Grant. Caper.
And I'm just going to take a moment to introduce our new community, what's your title, Mark? Cornelius?
I think I'm the Community Development Coordinator and Secondary Municipal Planner.
Excellent. And so probably in the larger community, a lot of you may recognize or know Mark. Actually, Mark was, I worked with Mark at one point in Ottawa County, so we're really glad to welcome him to the team here. So with that, take it away, Mark.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm just going to provide a little bit of context for what we're asking of you tonight, which is in essence to approve the annual report for the Community Development Block Grant Program. You're probably aware that that's a regular source of funds for the city. Community Development Block Grant comes through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's an annual allocation, first requires a plan, and we provide that year's worth of services and programs, and at the end of that year, we are required to submit a report, which is what is prepared and hopefully is in front of you electronically or on paper. And then there's a two-page summary that should be in front of you as well. I'm just going to kind of walk you through that real quickly and then open it up for questions. So the, the, the report in question covers the period of July one, two thousand and eighteen, to June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. It did require, HUD does require that we open it up for public comment, so we did do that through the Sentinel, that was, that period covered September thirteen to September thirty. We did not receive any comment during that period up to that point, but we also, I think, opened it up for a brief or some comment possibly yet tonight. One highlight, I guess, is that HUD requires that at least seventy percent of the funds, setting aside administrative costs, the remainder of the funds, that at least seventy percent directly benefit low and moderate income families. And based on the projects that we operated in the last year, one hundred percent of our non-administrative funds did directly benefit low to moderate income families. One particular area of activity that relates to HUD's requirement that recipients of CDBG funds engage in efforts that affirmatively further fair housing, in that, to that end, for several years running, we have sub-allocated some of our funds, a relatively small portion, this past year it was ten thousand dollars, to the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan to directly provide two types of services within the city and within West Michigan proper. They provide education and outreach sorts of services to make sure that families and households and housing providers, housing industry providers are aware of the fair housing laws and aware of the resources that are available. And they also provide, secondarily, they provide enforcement when needed. So in the last year, they were engaged with investigating or exploring the existence of discriminatory action in seven- of discriminatory action in seven instances in the city of Holland. You'll see on the second page of the summary report that the greatest share of our funds, no surprise, go to a program that we operate in-house, which is the home repair program. And just some highlights of that, 49 homes were, 49 households were assisted with Community Development Block Grant Funds through our home repair program. And then in addition to that, four additional homes of lower income households were assisted through Ken's program, the Home Energy Retrofit Program. So I think I'll leave it at that as an introduction, but am open to any questions that you might have about the report.
Pretty good, okay. Then we move to opening a public hearing. So if anybody is here to address this allocation of Community Development Block Grant, please make your way to the podium and let us know what you'd like us to hear, your name and address first, please. Seeing none of the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and we need a motion from council about this recommendation.
Will we approve the recommendation?
Moved by Huckstra.
Support.
Supported by Trithuie. Could you please call the roll Kathy?
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Corbin?
Huckstra?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Thank you. Nobody has a public thing to say, but it's an important program and it helps a lot of people. That home repair program, it's wonderful to have that, to come alongside people that would otherwise not be able to improve their homes. So thank you for taking the leadership on that, Mark. Appreciate it. Okay, now we are coming to public comment. This is a time where you can address council about whatever is on your heart. Again, you would just come to the podium, give your name and address, and you'd have five minutes to talk. There's a green light that means go, a yellow light that means one minute left, and a red light means their five minutes are up. We're open for comment. Yeah, that's for what we have on the agenda later. Yeah, Ken?
Hi, thank you. Ken Freestone, 845 East Eight Street. This is Energy Efficiency Day, but this is also Energy Awareness Month. There's a lot of things going on at the power, at the power plant, at the Holland Energy Plant. There's also a lot of things going on for living sustainably along the lake shore. And so there are a lot of events going on, and I'd like people to be aware of those. But one of the things that people always ask me and other colleagues in the sustainability world and the environmental sustainability, what can we do? You know, what can we actually do? Well, there's a really interesting little opportunity for many of you here and for all of us, the paper gator recycling system that's out there. A lot of you have them at your churches, schools, there are some of the public schools and a lot of the faith centers. The people that have signed up this month, there was a special promotion for paper gator paying double what they normally pay. So you can bring your recycled, your junk mail, your magazines, your newspapers, cereal box board, that kind of material can go to those paper gators. And the schools and the churches that have those get paid for that material. It gets turned into insulation, it gets turned into a number of other materials. So you can look that up, paper gator recycling, and you can find out what they use it for, but it's a great opportunity. So anytime you've got any of your junk mail at home, we have a great recycling system in Holland, we know that's really good, but here's a great opportunity to turn it into cash for people, whether it's a church or it's a school. I've chosen to bring mine to Black River Schools because I'm working with Hannah Huggett, our little super, our local little superstar, and I just love working with her. So I'm bringing my recycling there and the bins are usually out so people can just drive by and just put it right in there. But contact your school, contact your churches, see if you have a paper gator. This is a great opportunity. It's real simple. Nobody has to do much to make this happen. And it's one of the few things in the recycling world where that entity gets paid for that as opposed to having to pay to have it taken away. So it's a great resource, just one of those really unique things that came up just in the last couple of weeks that somebody introduced it to me, I sent it out to a bunch of colleagues, a bunch of people signed up for the double payment for this month. So again, take advantage of it and grab those newspapers and that junk mail and recycle it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Exciting recycling with Ken Freestone. I love your enthusiasm. Anyone else? We'll close public comment then, and we're moving on to the item that we took off of the consent agenda. And we'd like to start with Brian White talking to us about 30th Street Sidewalk.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, members of the audience and members of citizens of Holland that may be tuning in via the television network. Just wanted to provide some background on the project, talk about some of the specifics, kind of where we're at now, and then based on some feedback that we heard last night at a public meeting, provide an updated recommendation based on some of that input. So with regard to that, the, let's see if we can get over to some maps. So the city's transportation department and community and neighborhood services have been working together to identify gaps in our sidewalk network, trying to look at filling those gaps, again with some CDBG funding opportunities that we have there. And so we came up with a project along Ottawa Avenue, 30th Street and Plasman Avenue. And we had some initial correspondence with some residents along the route, particularly over by Plasman, that seemed to be pretty favorable. This was several weeks ago. And so we basically continued work on the project, put the project together. We held a public meeting last night. And again, I should indicate, we did have some technical difficulties with notices on that. So we sent out some notices last week that had some information on the project but didn't have specifics on the meeting. And so we recognized that, we went ahead and did a door-to-door notifications on Monday ahead of the meeting on Tuesday. And we did get some turnout there, which is good. I mean, that's the whole reason for doing that. So and I think we'll hear about that more later on tonight from the folks in the audience. But what I wanted to just touch upon is, so we tried to do the engagement there with the public, probably wasn't as smoothly as we would normally do it. But basically the project involves filling in gaps. If you take a look at the area in particular, there's pieces and parts, if you will, of sidewalk along 30th Street, along Ottawa Avenue, along 31st Street, that just kind of start and stop randomly through there. And so that's what brought our attention to the area. We want to try and plug those gaps, make a continuous sidewalk network, and then also connect it at its terminus. And again, what we're proposing to do is make the connection there at Plasman and 32nd, and then also at Ottawa and 32nd, and try and make that network whole, if you will, through there. So that was the essence behind the project and what we, you know, what we intended to do there with that. As I said, we had the public meeting yesterday, it was somewhat well-attended. Some folks are here from the audience that are going to talk, I think, more about it. So with that, getting back, these photos were taken just recently this week, but this is kind of an example of what we're talking about. In the lower left, you can see the gap in the sidewalk there. Again, trying to fill those gaps. In the upper right, you can see the kids walking home from school. Again, where there's sidewalk available, they're using them, where there isn't, they're obviously out in the road. And something you're all familiar with, but particularly in the wintertime, you know, this becomes more of a concern. And we did hear from the group last night about certain areas of the road itself are just narrow from a plowing standpoint, from, you know, kids walking like that, you know, you just kind of know and appreciate where they're going, kind of just along the street and along the snowbanks there in the wintertime. So again, that's really the essence of the project. We're trying to connect this stuff up, give folks, pedestrians, a place along the right of way, not in the roadway, to do that. One thing that we heard about at the meeting was, in addition to the sidewalk being, you know, somewhat haphazard with gaps, the road itself is also somewhat gapped out with curb and gutter in some areas and not in others. And to try and address that, to recognize that, we would propose as part of the recommendation, not only to address the sidewalk gap situation, but also address the road situation with the curb and gutters. We have some funding, I think we're going to have some residual funding available from our resurfacing program this year, that I think we could allocate towards a modified project, if you will, where we could basically realize that curb and gutter, fix those gaps, and basically improve the roadway, eliminate that situation with the narrowness over to the end by Ottawa, and kind of combine that with the sidewalk work as well. So the modified recommendation that we'd like to present to council tonight would be to phase this project out. We'd like to continue ahead with the 31st Street sidewalk, the Plasman Avenue sidewalk, and then there's also some sidewalk at a crossing at Crestview and Graskip that we propose to do. But the 31st Street, just so we're all on the same page, that 31st Street sidewalk, basically you can see it in pink here, but it's on the east end of 31st Street, it would connect that whole curb and gutter section on 31st Street to Ottawa Avenue and eliminate those gaps that are right at Ottawa. So that would be part of that first phase. The other piece would be on the west end along Plasman Avenue. One of the folks that we talked to, incidentally, on Plasman, you know, seemed receptive to the idea, he's doing some work on his yard. And so he's held up his work so that he can blend into what we're doing with the sidewalk. So that's another reason where we wanted to try and move ahead with Plasman so that gentleman could get going with his yard work and blending into what we proposed to do. So that would be the first phase. And then the second phase is we would propose to work with the neighborhood over the course of the winter to look at that area on 30th Street from a complete street perspective. And you recall, years past, we've done that, particularly the one I recall is along 24th Street by the high school there between Ottawa and Vinrolti, where we took a timeout basically and engaged with those folks through there and came up with, I think, was a pretty good project. And that had to do with parking and some things like that with Bueller. So again, proposing something similar there where we engage the neighborhood, take a look at not only the sidewalk, but the whole street. And then with the idea that we'd update plans, pay items, and incorporate that into potentially doing the entire neighborhood there as part of our 2020 resurfacing project. So we would look at that piece, if you will, from Holland Apartments to Ottawa on 30th Street, but then also in the interest of getting in that neighborhood only once, that we would move ahead with some resurfacing plans that we had originally identified for 2020. We just basically moved those up a year and resurfaced the neighborhood a year early to kind of coordinate with what we intend to do here with that piece of 30th Street. So an element that would remain would be, you know, connecting along 30th Street to that sidewalk on Plasman. We would go ahead and get an updated contractor bid, again, once we're through the design process. And then we'd bring that to council for approval ahead of the spring and summer construction season, and then we'd go ahead and implement that. The idea being that if we were going to do that, we'd try and incorporate that with the same schedule with resurfacing there too for 2020. So I know that's a lot of background on this particular project, but again, trying to be sensitive to some of the things that were brought up by the neighbors and certainly acknowledge the fact that it is kind of a hodgepodge thing through there, particularly as we get to Ottawa Avenue where we've got some curb and gutter, and then we've got some just pieces and parts, if you will, and we've got some sidewalk that's basically in that same kind of shape. So with that, I guess I'd like to turn that back over and I'm sure we'll hear more about the project, so.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. Did anyone have a question for Brian first?
I do.
Yeah, Mike?
How much of the stormwater infrastructure do we have in place already? Is it totally built out?
Yeah.
You just need to put the upper end on it and...
Yep. So that was one of the things I was wondering about. So we have storm sewer right at Ottawa Avenue that's actually across Ottawa Avenue. So we could tie into that storm sewer basically with anything that we brought down from 30th Street to the east. So there would be some storm sewer work along with that curb and gutter, but we have a place to put it.
So there would be some underground that had, that would have to go through, but...
Yeah, I think it's going to be pretty nominal because we're already across Ottawa. So we've got a place to tie in.
And it would only go about halfway where you see those apartment buildings.
Yeah, at this point, we wouldn't propose, you know, curb and gutter, again, pieces and parts, but it really stops at the apartment buildings. And we'd propose to fill in that area between the apartment buildings and Ottawa.
To the east, okay.
Yeah. You know, there certainly may be a desire to go further to the west with curb and gutter, but I think we'd have that discussion over the course of, you know, when we put this thing together, meeting with the neighbors, so.
Anyone else, council? Okay, let's open it up to public comment. If anyone came here to address this 30th Street project, love to hear from you. Name and address and yeah, five minutes.
Good evening. Malcolm Miller, 568 West 30th Street. 300 seconds is not much to discuss this, but it's something that I've seen, I'm a little happier with what Brian has discussed tonight because in the 31 years I've lived there, nothing's been done on that road particularly. And we, I've talked at length with Brian, we've emailed, I've had further discussions. The discouraging part was our notification. And I'm not here to berate someone for what they didn't do or shouldn't have done. I can only add, if you want a trust factor, you need to do this. And it should be, as a manager, a process in place in terms of notification, discussion, dialogue. Because there's a lot of things that I see historically that I could share to help this project. And in token, you share a lot with me since 2016 when Brian and I have discussions, understanding your obstacles. Ultimately, I believe it could have been fixed and it can be done. And I know the things we go through in terms of cost and finance, but if you have the goal and you're going to make it, there won't be obstacles and it may take us a little time and we have to jog about it. But it was discouraging to see how this was ruled out. Now Ottawa Avenue, I hope all of you have the opportunity to go down there during the daylight, preferably to walk. And I've done that once with Scott Boovie and I have done that with Brian, but to walk through that, the gateway into our neighborhood, and I consider the neighborhood 31st, 30th, 29th, that group right there, we're tied between Graskip, Ottawa, 32nd Street, is a neighborhood. To take a walk in there, the gateway to that neighborhood coming from 32nd on the Plasman, and you look at that, and then you look at the gateway entering that neighborhood from Ottawa Avenue on 30th Street, night and day. And the issues that are there, you know, the road's deteriorating, it's just patching. I'm not an engineer, but I've seen enough because what you keep patching keeps falling apart. We don't have, the aesthetics are poor, I mean, but it can be fixed very easily just by putting in the curbs, putting in those sidewalk gaps to do that, to make it a nicer neighborhood. And so, because right now, the Wolverine Gas Line is almost like a division between one neighborhood or another. And we really don't want to set up neighborhoods, especially when you're looking at housing and what we're trying to encourage by having this neighborhood and that neighborhood number really all in one. You know, our houses were built in the 50s, that was done in the 70s, far before anybody was probably here in council, and no one could have the forethought to see what would it, how it would turn out. It has, let's not complain about it, but let's move forward starting October 2nd, like a proclamation, the 30th Street's going to look better at some point in time. Brian, that's a good beginning, much better than last night, much nicer to see that. I still have some reservation about running sidewalks past the Wolverine Gas Line going west for a number of reasons. And I do have little concern because, you know, you've talked to the people on Plasman, well, that's all of four houses. And I know the house that you're talking about, the gentleman there who's doing a lot of good work, and really he's upping the neighborhood, he's done a lot inside, he's doing a lot outside, the aesthetics of that. And unfortunately, 31st hasn't been included, the park from Calvary Baptist to Plasman, you know, that really it needs to be tied in as well at some point in time. But I would like to see... But I would like to see us first accomplish, from the Wolverine Gas Line to Ottawa Avenue, to do that infrastructure we talked about, there already is some storm sewers that are in there, to tie that up, to clean that point, and then once that is done, have another discussion at some point in time, about where we wanna go from there. But, but this is much better than what has happened. You know, it's unfortunate that the consent agenda was printed up far before we got our first notices, but, you know, things do fall like far the cracks, and I really don't want to sit here and, and chastise anyone for what has happened, but I do wanna take the effort that tonight, October second is the beginning of that, that neighborhood between Twenty Ninth, Thirtieth, Thirty First, and Plasman and Ottawa Avenue, and Sandy Lane, of course, to clean that up. So it looks like one nice neighborhood, well, when you enter it and when you leave it, it's a nice neighborhood, and I don't think it's so costly that it can't be done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in.
My name is Dave Johnson, five fifty eight west thirtieth. I've lived in that neighborhood for about twenty-nine, almost thirty years. I would love to see some improvements in the area. We do have a little problem with crime in the area. Clone the green apartments have really cleaned up and done a lot better for the area, but some of the duplexes, we're having some problems down that way. I notice the police cars, there are different times of complaints. There are different duplexes that way, there are some sidewalks, some aren't. I'd like to see from the gas line, east to Ottawa Ave, fix, be for safety and security and stuff, and I would like to see some of, but the residential area, I'd like to see more improvements and more work upon that before I'd agree to any of that. So I just wanna state my case. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Hockstra, four eight, four eighty-four west Thirtieth Street. I am not an owner of property, as these people are. I'm a renter, and I've been there at least fifteen years in that area. I used to live one down to the east. I watched what happened at the apartment complex there for quite a while, until they changed ownership and cleaned house, and it's great. Couple of problems here and there, not like the knockdown, drag-out fights they used to have, but, when I look at my streets and I see the way they are, I'm embarrassed, because people come to visit, and they're going down a road that is smaller than what it should be for the vehicles going up and down there. There is gravel, no curbs in the first portions of there, coming up to our area where we live, and you get kids who are out there throwing stones at cars going by, you have stones all over the sidewalks most of the time. I had a knee replacement just over a year ago, and I can't walk on my streets, on my sidewalks, because they are a disaster. The road's falling apart. In the wintertime, we're down to a lane and a half in there, because those poor guys who have to plow here, have to plow because of all the cars parked on the areas where there are no curbs. Sometimes they're too deep, sometimes they're three deep. I have seen cars that have sat there all winter long, and all you see is a form of a car under a foot of snow. There's gotta be something that can be changed on an ordinance, to stop that parking like that, especially in the wintertime, make it just like a curbed area, but in, in essence, make it a curbed area. Redo the sidewalks, yes, make it curbed in there. Make it so that we can get our vehicles through. If some night, they had to get the massive fire trucks through there, they could have problems. Going up the hill, you have a car on each side, you can't go with two cars passing each other, because it is a narrow road. It's gotta be changed. There's the, all the little kids that have moved into the neighborhood recently, down toward Ottawa Avenue, they need to be protected. They are right out by the sidewalk, many times. You come in there, you don't go twenty-five, because you don't know when one of them is going to be darting into that road from by the cars. Cars are parked there, you cannot see these kids. I had a lot of other things, and I really wanna work with you two, please. I would like to be invited in there. My landlord could not be here tonight. She is interested in this whole thing, getting things going. Our driveway, the end of it is gravel, but we cannot put sidewalk in there until the people next to us do it, or it would all crumble. With the roads as well, we've got a hole just down the road from us every year. It keeps coming back, even though you guys fill it up, bless your heart, it keeps coming back. It's just like a, you know, it's like a pain. It's like the little grubs and the moles. The one thing I did wanna ask, and I don't understand on what you said, is Ottawa Avenue between Thirtieth and Thirty Second, will you be doing that this year, or whenever, as soon as possible, to get sidewalk in there?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, just go ahead with what else you have to say, and then we'll talk at the end.
But anyway, that's, that's what, we need to do something down there, and it's had a long time. We've had a whole lot of problems. We used to have guys from the police department down there a whole lot. It's, we've gotta get this ended, and we've gotta get it straightened out. It's gotten better down there for police, we've gotten rid of a lot of the bad people, but we need to get this in there, to get the cars, the parking, and that type of thing taken care of as well. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, we'll close, public comment about that, and moving to council, we had a motion and a second, any conversation? Would you like to address some of the questions, Brian?
Yes, I would. So, first question with regard to Ottawa Avenue, you know, that could go either in the first phase or the second phase, I guess that's, that's somewhat phase-agnostic, but I would say, that's certainly a connection that we wanna make. So, that's definitely, we wanna be able to link up, you know, those, some of those are cul-de-sac streets with only one, you know, one out with the sidewalks, we'd wanna connect that up with Ottawa. The other thing I'd like to just share with you, our thought from a staff perspective, is that, you know, typically, when we talk about these things, we enter into the discussion about special assessments. I think, given the situation and the fact that this is somewhat of a hodgepodge, where you have instances where, you know, some neighbors have, have it, some neighbors don't, and it's really just very random through there, and, and this is sidewalk and curb and gutter, that we would propose, again, to eliminate those gaps, basically, without the special assessment coming along with that. Now, whether or not, again, if we were to look further to the west, where we don't have the hodgepodge, and it's just, you know, more of a, you know, a standard street, if you will, albeit a, a shoulder section street, I think at that point, you know, that discussion should be had, about whether or not that, that, that should be assessed. So, again, wanted to, to clarify that, so.
And some of this is CDBG eligible, correct?
Yeah, so one of the elements of that CDBG is, you know, decide to address those sidewalk gaps, and particularly, again, just sidewalks, so not necessarily with the street. So, we'd certainly wanna utilize those funds for that purpose.
Great, yeah. Any other comments or discussion?
Can I ask just a quick?
Yes.
Quick question for reference, Brian, the, the pipeline that was referenced, that runs along the western edge of the Baptist Church, on the north and south from there, kind of, is that right?
Yeah, I believe that runs west of the Holland Apartments there, and Malcolm, am I good with that? Is that the right alignment?
That's correct.
Yes.
And they just went through there recently and cleaned it again, they, they have their right of way that they clean up, and it's...
Yeah, yeah, so just west of the apartments, they're Holland Apartments.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And think of that kind of being the delineation also of curb and gutter, and where we'd look to, to...
Infill.
Wrap things up in infill, on one side, and then the discussions, like on the curb and gutter, like Brian mentioned, if the neighborhood would want that to the west of that, then I think that probably does fall in the special assessment conversation. May I?
No, I'm sorry, sir, we, we had public comment, we have to stay with the system here. Anyone else?
Let me just add, just, so the recommendation tonight, I think, leaves open all those conversations and the details that the neighborhoods talked about.
Right.
So that, over the winter, those things would be sorted out, so the recommendation would say, move forward with the elements that we believe don't cause further complications with work that would be done in the future years. It meets the goals of the CDBG program, and kinda fits those pictures that you've seen. We're not aware of opposition or, you know, problems. We do acknowledge that the, we had another program set up for the CDBG infill, and ran into problems here. It's not a excuse or anything, but this was kinda like, bringing this forward probably a little quicker. I've definitely made sure with staff that it's like, okay, we have more of these infill programs that we wanna do, let's get those on the agenda, and let's work with the neighborhoods in the wintertime, so that we don't, you know, run into this problem again in the future. Staff obviously agrees with that. We wanna do better in that area. But I think what, what you have in this recommendation is, it moves forward, it spends some of that CDBG money, it's something that we can get done this fall, and then we can sort, sort through some of those issues on Thirty Fifth extended over the winter.
So you just flop, flip-flop the program, so that we do what we agree on first, and we'll work out the other details later? That's great. Everybody okay? Could you call the roll, please, Kathy? Did we even have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did. My, my mistake.
Yeah, we didn't have an amended motion, so I thought we were hoping for an amended motion.
Amended motion.
Okay. Motion to adopt the recommendation as amended by the city engineer.
Almost recordable, Mike. Got it.
Support.
Moved by Trithuie, supported by Byrd. Could you call the roll, please, Kathy?
Trithuie?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Every neighborhood project is an art and a science. Thank you for sticking with us and helping us think this through, and I'm sure we're gonna come through with a great project long-term and have great feedback this winter, so. Thank you, Brian, for working with everything. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're on to adopting the Michigan Department of Transportation resolutions regarding pavement warranties. Brian?
Yes, so, if you recall, earlier this year in March, we just touched upon it at a study session, but basically, this has to do with, back in two thousand fifteen, there was some legislation for the additional road funding at that time, and that, what came along with that was a desire to come up with a program, basically, that would address this notion about having warranties associated with pavement projects, and larger pavement projects. So, I included a summary of basically that, just a one-pager, certainly happy to go into any kinda detail that you'd like on that, but, but what the warranty program does, and it, it typically, it trips at two million dollars of pavement work, if you will, so once you hit that threshold, then, then that's when these warranties would kick in, and they want to hear from the local agencies. We're not required to use them, but we would have to provide an excuse or a reason for why we wouldn't wanna use them, and I don't see us doing that. I also don't see us really coming up with a project that would necessarily trip that threshold, I think that's typically, those projects are gonna be still a ways away from what our typical pavement project would be. Nonetheless, we'll have this on the books, MDOT is wanting that, and it's basically divided up into three different areas, so you can imagine, a complete reconstruct has a little different warranty to it than, say, a mill and resurface, because you just don't know or understand what's underneath that milled surface that may affect a warranty per se. So, they divide this warranty up into different categories, and try and recognize that, that when we get into complete reconstructs, then that warranty period can go a little longer. When we do a resurface, then that warranty period, obviously, is, is much shorter. So, again, they tried to address all that in the time between that, that legislation was passed and, and earlier this year. So, with that, there's, there's two resolutions, one to basically adopt the warranty program, and then the other one to implement it according to their criteria, again, focusing around that two million dollar mark. So, so that's what's before you tonight, is to go ahead and pass those. I can share with you that this is a, you know, standard cookbook thing that, that all local agencies, road agencies are, are adopting across the state, so, would recommend.
At least if we want money, right?
Yeah, right, right, so of course, that's tied to the Act Fifty One funds and things like that, so.
Okay, yeah, very little choice involved for us.
Yeah, right, right.
Right. Thank you.
Will we adopt the resolutions?
Moved by Hookstra. Do we do both at once, Ron? The adoption and implementation?
Sorry, had trouble hitting the button here on the microphone. Yes, you could, you can adopt both resolutions at once, as long as the motion is clear that that's being done, but if anyone likes to have separate votes on the two resolutions, then it should be done separately, but otherwise, if there's no objection to doing both, you can adopt both at once.
Okay. Any objection to doing both? I think we look pretty happy. Okay, Dave?
Good, yes, that was my intention.
Yes. All right. Moved by Hookstra, having polled everyone well.
My intention to second that, as the man said.
All right. Seconded by Trithuie. Could you please call the roll, Kathy?
Lynn?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We wanna play well with the state and its funding. Thank you, Brian. Moving on to management and administrative services, the gifts of the evening, could you help us with that, please, Kathy?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Public Safety Services Police Operations K nine program, Jack and Lynn Fields, fifty dollars. Public Safety Services Fire Operations, in-kind donation received from Ed and Audrey Hislop, a Ron Burns-framed, printed-of-nine-eleven dog named Cyrus, valued at approximately one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Human Relations Multicultural Festival, Community Foundation Holland Zealand Area, one thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. Holland Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, three thousand dollars. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy.
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Moved by Trithuie.
Support.
Supported by Byrd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries, it's a very special story that goes with the picture of the dog being donated to the fire department, that I guess a lady was taking her dog out, and the dog wrapped his leash around her or something, somehow she fell by Collin Park, and the fire department came and helped her, and she, they encouraged her to go to the hospital, even though she thought she was okay, but oh yes, she did break her hip, and they took care of the dog for her as well. And so the family is very grateful for how the fire department helped her out, her husband wasn't available, and, and they even took care of her dog, and, and helped her get the help that she needed, even though she didn't think she did, but she did, so. Wonderful, wonderful, thoughtful gift for the fire department, and they were very grateful. So, that's wonderful. Okay, communications from our city manager, Mr. Keith Mabique.
I'm gonna break my streak here, and I actually do, I am gonna take a little bit of time, so I apologize in advance, this mic's giving me that look.
You're so totally worth it.
So just a, just a few things. One, just as a, for your information, you know, we probably all get those bulk junk mails sometimes at our home, and we didn't throw this one out, but we got a class action notification as a city here recently on the opioid crisis, which actually gave the city to either take action and opt out of this class action lawsuit, or do nothing, and then we retain our rights and options moving forward. I consulted briefly with our fine city attorney here, and he recommended, don't know if it's gonna come to anything, but certainly informing you, where unless you would give us other action, I, I think we will choose to not take any action, and we will retain our rights and options as it relates to that possible litigation moving forward. So that's just a piece of information, sharing it with you. Otherwise, several events that are coming up, and I don't always do this, and I always have this in your updates on Fridays, so hopefully you, you, you all read those, I'm sure, as soon as I send those out on Fridays. But a handful of events that are coming up, it's kind of that season, that we do secure tables for, in some cases, they're free and they're offered to us, but wanna highlight four specific... four specific things. One, on October 28th, there is the Disability Network of the Lake Shore Dinner. So I think you've received some of those updates, but make sure, let us know through CINC or ASTER if you would wish to attend that. On November 1st is the annual Laup Dinner, Laketown Center. Maybe we'll try to get them to the Civic Center place here in the future, but it's in Laketown Center, and we have secured some tables for that. So again, CINC or ASTER, let us know if you'd like to attend. On the 7th, there's a new dinner, and I think it's connected to a new director that they've just hired, and that's again on November 7th, Alita Dinner. Again, let us know if you'd like to attend. And then finally, the Diversity Forum that we're having in partnership with Ottawa County is on November 15th. I think you have already received, or if not, you're going to. Make sure that if you choose to sign up for that event, that you use the code that's provided to us for the City of Holland for a variety of reasons, and one of those is because then we will get just one invoice, and you don't have to worry about payments. And the reason, one of the reasons we want one invoice is, I can do this under my signature, so I guess I'm technically not asking for your approval, but for your information and consent, what I'm looking to do is create a budget for employees, mayor and council, and ASTER's also sent this out to our boards and committees, so that maybe we have representatives. I don't think we're looking to send everyone necessarily, on all of our boards and committees, that may, we can get representatives from those boards and committees. And instead of then having everyone have to figure out payments either out of their pocket or from those individual departments or boards and committees, that we would, with your direction, but definitely my recommendation, I'd create a budget for that, so we would just cover that cost from one place, which is another reason why, to make sure that if you or if someone else is signing up, make sure that they follow the directions that we've tried to make clear and use that code. People do, we're encouraging people to sign up on their own rather than like let CINC or ASTER know, because there are some choices that you would make for some of the breakout So that's that. And then the other thing, study sessions, right? Typically, when we do study sessions, I let you know what's coming up. I try to always juggle those, but usually there's not homework involved. And may, this isn't too bad of homework, but next week, two particular things that we're looking at, I think, I think already last week I sent out to you the rules of council with a request to maybe review those, and if there's anything that you'd like to bring up for discussion, let me know in this coming week. Otherwise, certainly we'll have time, bring them up at the study session next week. What I'm proposing is, we'll go through in a study session, there's been different bits and pieces that you've all recommended, and maybe some ideas that I have. So what I'm looking to do is just having a discussion about, rather than getting to the first meeting after the election and kind of adopting a new set of rules of council, maybe have some discussion about things that we could change. And then the other thing, I will also have our first-ever quarterly update on your strategic and business plan, and my, my hope is that I will have that draft ready, and that will go out in the packet on Friday, so you don't have to hear me read through every box when we get together next Wednesday, but certainly then would be able to highlight anything that you want, you know, when you've reviewed it and you have a question about something. I think this will be one of those things where I'm still looking to find the right balance of giving you enough information and updates and kind of keep it within a four-page format, but especially because it's the first one, I'm really interested in feedback and making sure that we make this a meaningful document, because I think we put a lot of work into it. I think it's really core to your work and my partnership in doing that work with staff. So, yeah, if you would, just take a look at that when we send that out in the packet on Friday, so that we can have a good discussion about it next week, Wednesday. Sorry for all that extra time, I usually don't do it, but we'll still get out of here on time tonight, I think.
Thank you, Keith. So valuable.
Can I ask the man a question before he goes away?
Certainly, Mr. Hookstra.
Could you, you may have sent the information on that inclusion event on the 15th of November before, but could you have someone resend that with the code and all that, so we can be sure to have the updated information?
Absolutely, and I think you'll see, I'll put it in my Friday communication from now until, until then, but absolutely.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing like a little repeated information. Anyone else have a question for him? No? Okay. Comments from the mayor? There's a fire truck parade Friday, right? Seven o'clock, so come out and support the fire department. We appreciate all that they do, and obviously, we just talked about them, so they have, they are an amazing organization and very dedicated people for people medically, as well as all the smoke in your house, and they're a great group of people, so it's great to support what they do. And on to communications from council members. Keith did most of his time, so.
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
First of all, another event that's coming up on October 12th is the tulip planting at Window on the Waterfront. Two different times, eight to 10 and 10 to 12. It's put on by Tulip Time. There is a signup sheet. I would encourage everybody to, that is willing, able, especially fellow council members, to come out and help plant the 300,000-plus tulips that need to go into that area, and then come in the spring and see what's popped up. It's always interesting every year, and we have a good time. So Saturday, October 12th, signup online, the volunteer for Tulip Time, again, two times, eight to 10 and 10 to 12. And I also, and I noticed that after he had his review, he extended his talking time.
That's why you're.
That's, there we go. I had a little chat with Keith this past week, his review as per our contract, and after getting some feedback from people, and it went very well, and the contract also says that there will be an increase of a two-and-a-half percent, which we will be granting him. The contract was passed by all of us, so this is for information. There will be a more formal review in the spring. We're checking into his 360 and the ICMA recertification, that's the word I was looking for. So that will happen in a very short period of time. So Keith, I want to say thank you. It's been a very interesting year. You've accomplished a lot, and we're still getting to know each other, so it's been a great working relationship. It continues to be a good working relationship. I choose my words very carefully here, and we look forward to working with you in the future. So thank you very much.
It's my honor and privilege. It's great working with all of you, and it's fun tackling the opportunities and challenges we have together as a city, so let's keep moving forward.
Yeah, thank you very much, Keith. Really appreciate all the hard work you've gone through and doing a lot with our strategic and business plans, this massive, massive work, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you very much. Any other communications from other council members or motions and resolutions? If not, we get down to that one item.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trithuie.
Support.
Supported by Peters. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much for being a part of civic action.